Good evening. I'll call this meeting of the Cartersville City Council to order if you will please stand for our invocation and pledge.
Say it again, pray now.
Yes.
Join me as we pray. Our dear gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the beautiful spring weather today and the weekend that is before us and the time of celebration and the remembrance of what Christ did on the cross for us and then also the hope that we have in the resurrection and new life. So we celebrate that this weekend. We remember it tonight. And we ask that you would go before us and that you would give us wisdom as we do the work of this great city tonight. We thank you for your blessings to us, that you would continue to give us favor. And it's in your holy name we pray.
Please join me in the flag.
Flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united heart, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Ray, the roll please.
Kerry Hyde, Ward one. Here. Jay Sett, Ward two.
Here.
Kerry Ross, Ward three.
Here.
Calvin Cooley, Ward four.
Here.
Gary Fox, Ward five. Melissa Cordell, Ward six.
Here.
Thank you, Julia. First order of business is the approval of our council meeting minutes from our last meeting. When was that? He looked at his agenda and said it was April the 3rd. And so, council, you've had these agenda minutes well in advance of tonight and had an opportunity to review them? I'm sorry about interrupting over there.
Yes, you are.
Thank you. Sorry, I'll wait.
Go ahead.
If you've reviewed the agenda and have any changes to it, now would be the time to make those changes. If there are none, motions in order.
Second.
Second. All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
And the minutes are approved. Mr. Porter, get us started off in a good direction tonight, please.
Yes, Mayor. Obviously, Tom Reinhardt has turned in his resignation for retirement officially on May 30th, and we began the process of looking for a new finance director. I'm pleased to make a recommendation for Diana DeSanto to be the finance director effective May 31st. As I mentioned in the work session, she'll be starting on May 5th, so she'll have some time with Tom to learn some good and bad about working with some department heads that may cause issues, but... But I'd like to officially ask for approval of my recommendation for Diane Santo to be the next finance director for the city of Cartersville.
Very well. Any discussion on the item? If there's none, motions in order.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
And the motion carries unanimously. Welcome.
Dan, you did have an effective date for that?
May 31st.
Very good. Thank you. We are removing Motorcycle Awareness Month from the agenda...
Oh, I'm sorry, we gotta swear? I'm sorry. Still new at this. It's only been 16 years?
It's only been here for a couple of years.
Go ahead, Julia.
All right. Second, you'll just raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the State of Georgia, that you will in all respects observe the provisions of the Charter and ordinances of the city of Cartersville, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of Hope You God?
I do.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you. Sorry, jumped the gun there. Motorcycle Awareness Month, we did have a proclamation that we are not going to present. Not because we don't believe in motorcycle awareness, it's that the group from the motorcycle folks told us during the work session that two years ago they went to the wrong location. This year, they came an hour early during the work session, so we presented to them outside of the meeting. And we do encourage everybody to share the road. That includes both the motorcycle folks and the vehicles that they act in a responsible manner. But we did present that to them earlier, so we'll take that right off the agenda as we've already recognized them. Mr. Archer, if you would please keep the ball rolling.
Okay, this is a second reading of ordinances. The city of Cartersville is amending its code of ordinances to add a new section under Section 15-13, non-resident fees. This update introduces non-resident fees for the senior aquatics facility with rates for daily, quarterly, semi-annual, and annual passes. We recommend approval.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, sir. Mr. Lovell?
Yes, Mayor. The first one is a resolution designating contact people for board meeting and notifications for MEAG and the MEAG Competitive Trust. We are designating positions this time, which would be the city manager and the electric superintendent instead of names, so we don't have to update this in the future.
Thank you. Any discussion on this item? If not, a motion's in order.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item, please. Mr. Lovell?
Mayor, in order to handle open records requests to the city more efficiently in the future, it is recommended that y'all approve a resolution appointing open records officers for the city, being the city clerk and the commander of the administrative division at the police department, to be effective as of May 5th. This is recommended by staff for your approval.
Thank you. Any discussion? If there's none, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Lovell, keep going.
Mayor, this is an amendment to the business license ordinances, which will allow staff to have individuals who dispose of half-waste materials that they dispose of, such as food trucks, landscapers, car washes and all, to just let them be aware there are city regulations governing where that is to be disposed and where it is not to be disposed. It's mainly addressed for dispositions into our storm sewer system, as some of those have caused some issues in the past. This is the first reading. It is recommended by staff for your approval.
Thank you. Is there any discussion at this point? Thank you. If there's none, again, first reading. We'll have a second reading of this ordinance at the May 1st meeting, at least y'all will, and we'll make a final determination on that. Mr. Porter, you've got the next couple, please.
Yes, Mayor. First one is a parking license agreement. As you recall, envisioning, we talked about getting with Chamber. They agreed to a new agreement to allow us to lease the space for 81 spaces over there at the Chamber parking lot to be used for citizens, restaurant owners, anybody that needs to be parking downtown. And that will be a fee of $500 a month. That's recommended for your approval.
Thank you. I'm sure we'll be talking about this a little bit more in concert with the Chamber, but I do want to thank the Chamber for their willingness and acceptance of this agreement. This came to us... The Chamber did exactly what they could and should do. Their parking lot was not being maintained by those that were using that parking lot out of their kindness, and when corrective action wasn't taken, they simply said, "No more parking on our private property." It had, to some degree, a negative impact on some of the nearby businesses, and we heard from them in this council chambers. And glad that we were able to get together through the council, able to work with the Chamber to come up with an agreement to where we'll lease these spaces. And Keith, I don't know what the effective date on this, but those will be made back open to public parking with certain limitations in the not-too-distant future, so...
Yeah, the effective date in the agreement currently is blank, because item two has the term, so you may want to authorize, in the motion, Dan, to fill in the effective dates.
Okay. If council would put that in the motion, that would be fine. If there's any other discussion on this, let's have it now. And if there's not, a motion is in order.
Motion to approve the parking license agreement with Dan having the authority to add the effective date.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. I do, if I didn't say it earlier, as I was rambling, want to thank Cindy and the board at the Chamber for their willingness, and also thank you to council for working together to make this happen for the good of the city. Next item, Dan.
Yes, sir. The Good Neighbor Home or Shelter is applying for a grant through DCA, and this application requires the mayor to sign the application. It does not obligate the city in any way, but I do recommend approval for the mayor to sign the DCA grant application.
Questions, comments, or motions?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Morgan, you've got the next several, sir. While you're making your way up, council, undertake a motion to add two items to the agenda?
Submove.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Two items added.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. We're requesting approval retroactively for the temporary boards that we did down at the CPD firing range. This was a time-constrained act that we need to move forward with. We're just asking your approval to move forward with that.
Thank you. Questions for Freddie on this? If not, a motion's in order.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item, please.
The next item is three contracts with Geo-Hydro engineers. This is for third-party testing. It'll affect the work we're doing at the CPD firing range, also the new recreation center in Matthew Hill Park. So this will be their testing and erosion control services for that as we move forward with those three bills.
Okay. Thank you. Any discussion? Chair will undertake a motion to approve the three contracts.
Motion to approve the three contracts.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. GDOT contract.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. This is a request for the council to authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the GDOT contract. They require it via DocuSign. We're asking for approval. It allows us to receive the federal funds that are allocated towards these projects.
Okay. Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Keep going, Freddie.
Yes, sir. This next item is a fourth quarter Bartra County invoice for the motor rotor invoices. It covers our police, fire, gas, fibercom, other departments, in the amount of $42,803.20. We're asking for approval to pay that.
Thank you. Any discussion? If there's not, a motion's in order.
Make a motion to approve the invoice.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Continue on.
The next item is HVAC, a request HVAC replacement at the Bartra County Library of the Cartersville branch at 429 West Main Street. We're requesting approval to move forward Mike Jones HVAC in the amount of $9,154.
Thank you. Any discussion? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Last one for you, Freddie, I think.
Yes, sir, it is. The water department moved forward with three vehicle replacements. There were a Sterling dump truck that they need to replace, an Expedition SUV they need to replace, and there were three separate F-150s that need to be replaced. We're requesting your approval to move forward after we reviewed the bids with Preetah Ford for the three F-150s in the amount of $134,733. Preetah Ford for the SUV in the amount of $58,362.40, and the dump truck with Peach State Ford in the amount of $106,953.56.
Thank you. Any discussion? If there's none, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Freddie. Mr. McKee, you're up next.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. The first item that we have, the electric department is requesting approval to purchase an 88-foot bucket truck. We have located the specifications for an Altec, which meets our desired specifications and matches equipment that our crews are familiar with operating. It's quoted via Sourcewell, contract number 110421-ALT. This will be replacing a 2000 model year Altec bucket truck, so that's our oldest bucket truck. It's also our largest bucket truck at 25 years old, and we're requesting approval for that purchase of $533,435, and this will be a budgeted expense.
But the lead time is almost two years, and so we're asked for approval now so we can get in the queue, and hopefully in two years, we'll be able to take the delivery in.
Yes.
Wow. I didn't know the two-year part. That's... Wow. All right. Any discussion? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
And the motion carries unanimously. Last item for you, Tom.
Yes, this is the purchase... or the request for approval to purchase a total of 21 Dell rugged laptops and associated hardware from Dell Technologies. This will replace existing desktop computers for all of our electric department employees and allow for use in the field. Total amount is $82,718.79, and it's recommended for approval. In addition, requesting approval for the installation of these units. That was a separate quote from Dana Safety Supply Incorporated for $14,049.
Tom, if you would, we talked about it in the work session. Talk just about how this will benefit the citizens that we serve?
Yeah, absolutely. So, as you can see on the screen, basically, we have maps with some of the new software that we have now through our advanced metering infrastructure system. That shows us exactly where meter outages are in the electric system. And in the bottom left-hand corner, that's the newest system that we have, which is Futura, that shows all of our lines and circuits and essentially how those come out of different substations. And what the laptops are going to give our crews the ability to do is see all of that information out in the field. As it currently stands, they have to call back in over the radio to get a visual on what that looks like and a direction from our dispatchers on where to go. Those dispatchers aren't available 24/7, and so we're going to put that ability out in the field with the crews, which in essence is going to cut down the time for restorations during power outages and allow our crews to go directly to the source of that outage and start working immediately.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Any discussion? If not, a motion is in order.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Before you go anywhere...
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to thank Tom and his crews. Obviously, the other night, we had two outages, not because of us, one, I guess, was a limb on the line earlier in that afternoon that caused some outages, but the second one on Center Road, about 520 customers were without power. His crews came up with out-of-box thinking and quickly got on. Most of those crews, most of those customers, basically about 79 were out, but he estimated a five-hour turnaround time, and it was much less that they had to replace a pole out there. So thank you, guys, for your crews and what they've done.
Absolutely. We'll pass that along. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Wilson, you got the next few.
Sir, Mr. Mayor and council, first item is our automatic side loader, our newest automatic side loader solid waste truck encountered some mechanical issues that we have to get repaired from the manufacturer, Carolina Environmental Systems, Inc. It's a pretty sizable repair. It's an estimated fee of $33,978.33. We recommend approval of this needed repair.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. The next item we have is a public workshop is looking at upgrading our sign shop. From more dated... We employ some dated, I guess, materials and...
You need some new equipment for the sign shop.
Yeah, it's dated, and it's time to step it up and get a little bit more up-to-date. We're looking at using new software, getting new software, laminator, layout table, as well as being able to make our signs in a little different fashion, much faster and a lot more capabilities than we have now. We reached out to three different companies for quotes. Lowest one was $46,187.21 from Grimco, which is in Marietta, and we're recommending approval to purchase these equipment for that price, and we will be using...
2020 Spots.
2020 Spots to do that.
Thank you. Any questions on this item? If there are none, a motion is in order.
Make a motion to approve the purchase.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Final item for you, please, sir.
Thank you. Last item. In 2020, in December 2024, we entered a contract with Inliner Solutions from Stone Mountain to repair various storm pipes throughout the city through the use of spray casting or cure-and-place pipe. We, since that time, they were here recently, within the last several weeks, doing repairs. We encountered some issues with a pipe on Felton Road that has some damage to it that would... could utilize repair in the form of spray casting. We reached out to them and got a price to repair this 48-inch pipe that extends 360 feet. We can do a change order with Inliner based on this original contract for $107,640. By doing this, we will utilize the ARPA funds, American Rescue Plan Act. Since we were doing a change order and qualify for these funds, we feel this project would help our stormwater division manage, reduce, and recapture stormwater at this location. Therefore, this meets the requirements of eligibility or ARPA funding, and we recommend approval of this change order.
Thank you. Any discussion? If not, a motion is in order.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
And the motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Mr. Forsyth, you've got the next several, I believe.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, Mayor, council. The first item is a replacement skid steer loader for the water pollution control plant. We're replacing a 2003 model whose repairs exceed the value of the current skid steer. We received quotes, open bids. The lowest quote was from Haney Farms Ranch Supply in Rottmark for $74,500. It's available today on the lot, so we're recommending approval of this purchase.
Thank you. Any questions on this item? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Construction GMP number one.
Yes, sir. This is what the contractor is calling Work Package Zero, which is primarily limited demolition, site work and grading, and order of long lead time items for the wastewater or the water pollution control plant construction project. The guaranteed maximum price, including contingencies, for this is $23,772,245, and I recommend it for your approval. The funding for this will be from Water Department revenue, Water Department reserves, and possible... not possible, likely debt issuance.
Very good. Just in the event that anybody hears those numbers. We know these numbers ahead of time. We know they're big numbers, but this is also planned expansion and growth that I know has gone into at least about 18 months, if not longer than that, worth of planning and work. Some of it is necessary... well, all of it's necessary. A lot of it is required through unfunded mandates. So, that being said, I know we tend to move pretty quickly here at council meetings, but don't mistake that to think that we haven't looked at all this ahead of time and know the gravity and where that money's actually coming from, so... That being said, any other questions or comments? If not, chair will undertake a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Cartersville Water Master Service Agreement.
Yes, sir. This is an engineering services agreement for Croy Engineering. We have a couple of projects we would like to employ Croy to design for us, and this requires a master service agreement with that engineering firm. I recommend it for your approval.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Speaking of Croy...
Yes, sir. The first task order, it would be a Granger Drive sewer relocation engineering. It would replace some abandoned lines through a horsefield pasture, which is currently causing us a lot of excessive inflow and infiltration into our plant through rainwater entering through old infrastructure, and this would replace that. Croy Engineering has submitted a cost of $69,670 to design that replacement, and I recommend it for your approval.
Thank you. Any discussion? If there's not, a motion is in order.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
And the motion carries unanimously. Next item.
Yes, sir. The final item I have is the second task order for Croy Engineering for the Main Street sewer replacement engineering, and this only includes the section of Main Street between Irwin Street and the railroad. There is a old, we don't even know how old it is, six-inch clay sewer line that has... in the process of failing. And this is a request to allow Croy Engineering to design a remedy for that section of sewer for $51,845. I recommend it for your approval.
Thank you. Any discussion? If there's not, a motion is in order.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Sidney. We do have those two items that are added to the agenda earlier. Mr. Lovell, if you will, share with us item number one.
Yes, Mayor. This is a standard right-of-way deed of dedication for the Jackson Farms subdivision. It is recommended by staff for your approval.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. And, Mr. Porter, you have the final item.
Yes, Mayor. We have an annual invoice for our producer insurance policy from Watkins Insurance in the amount of $11,891. Recommend it for your approval.
Thank you. Any discussion? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Reinhardt, come forth and close this out in a good way with the financial report, sir.
I have wanted to do this for 16 years, so I'm going to keep it short. I'm a mayor and council. We have been looking at the February 2025 and comparing to February 2024. You have my notes in front of me or in front of you. If you have any questions, please feel free to ask.
He's really making it short.
And hearing none...
Boy, no, bro, you made it for 16 years.
The cash position for the month of February 2025, the unrestricted cash balance increased along with the restricted cash balance. The Spots 2014 balance is $239,269.9, and Spots 2020 fund is $15,710,684. That is my report for the evening.
Well, I won't let you off that easy, Mayor. But seriously, the city's in good financial shape thanks to Tom and his staff. He's done a tremendous job. You can see through the monthly financial numbers. But I know your time is short with us, but I do appreciate your 16 years, and I hear that you wanted to make this from your last one, and technically, you're here at the end of May, so you have another meeting in May.
I have sick time, though.
It happens.
Well, I will just say thank you for 16... hard to believe it's 16 years. It's a long time.
I've been finance director almost 16 years.
Yeah. That's fantastic. I've enjoyed working with you, and I appreciate your leadership, and I know, you know, that the navigating, as we've changed auditors over the years or needs, and, of course, the city has grown. It's a rather complex situation, the way our city is with as many utilities, probably more complex than most other cities, and you've handled that with a plum.
Not an easy thing to take over, but it was... had it ups and downs. We'll just put it that way.
Yeah. Well, if this is your last meeting, hopefully you'll be in great health and be turning cartwheels at the next two meetings.
You never can tell.
But you never can tell. And so, anyway, I just want to say thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Tom.
Don't ever be missed.
Thank you. Thank you, council.
Thank you, too.
Are you leaving?
Wade feels bad about making that comment about you during the work session, too.
Tom, I was just confirming. You're leaving it better than Dan left it to you, right? No problem.
Very good. Is there other... I see we've got folks here tonight. If you'd like to come forward and speak, please, this gentleman in the front here first. Yes, sir, you were here first, so... Hold on there, Mike. We'll get to you. Now, for anybody that is getting up, I need your name and your address so that our clerk can put it in the minutes.
Yes, I haven't done this before, but my name is Bob Moore. I live at 220 Parkview Drive in Deerfield. And what I have is a few compliments and a few questions. First of all, you, Mayor, and the council, I commend you for what you've done for this city. It's amazing. If anybody moves here from someplace else, they'll really notice it. You've done a great job. But first of all, I want to mention the traffic. This is something that everybody is concerned about. I'm sure you are, too. But the traffic gets worse day by day by day, and we're faced with a serious problem because we're bringing in industries and warehouses and apartments and houses, and it's only going to get worse. And it's to the point now where it takes a long time just to get across town. So maybe you're already addressing this, but I recommend that you create some sort of a task force with a group of people to come up with some ideas and address this. I think it's a major problem. And the other thing is, there's a... along with the traffic, there's a lot of... the police are having a hard time because along with heavy traffic comes accidents. People take more chances. They're not using turn signals. They follow too close. If there's an opening, they cut in front of people. And so, that's also part of the whole... If there's an opening, they cut in front of people, and so that's also part of the whole problem. So the police are more busy, they're, they're busier dealing with accidents and don't have as much time as they need to address these things, which would probably cut the number of accidents. So along with that, I remember two or three years ago, the newspaper had an article in there saying that we were going to get a fourth bridge. And if you recall that or not, I think they were probably going to use funding from Splosts with it, but have you heard any more about it?
So... I was gonna make, I was gonna make a little funny comment about my friend at the newspaper. There was a study that was done.
Yeah, they were talking about Taylor Street.
My, my general opinion on studies is the only people that benefit from those are the people who get paid to do studies. But, um, there was, there was a study that was done by somebody who came up with the idea that we would have another bridge that would traverse, uh, center, uh, excuse me, uh, west, no, it wasn't west, it was, um...
West Avenue.
Yeah, West and Post, well, Postell's the other way, right? Yeah, West and Postell. When you, when you take a look at that, first of all, there, there's not Splosts money for that, but, um, you look at how you would get off of Tennessee Street and get on that bridge, or how, how you would get off that bridge to get to where you're going, first of all, the city, I, I'll just tell you this, we're not building another bridge, at least not while I'm sitting in the chair.
Well, the thing of it is, what you described might not have helped the traffic flow around here anyway.
No, it probably would have made it a little bit worse.
That's right.
And we are doing things, for instance, on the north side of town in Tennessee Street, where we're putting a roundabout in to kind of keep traffic flowing and to reduce the number of accidents that happen at some of those busier intersections, uh, that are up and down Tennessee Street. But that, but that, that bridge is not, that's a, that's a no-go.
I would reiterate, though, that you, you, uh, organize some kind of a, a committee or something to address that problem further, even if you have to go out with that committee and get some ideas from other towns that have dealt with this kind of problem. Because it's, it's going to be a big problem. It's bad now, and it can only get worse. And the police are, they're almost overloaded trying to keep up with everything, I know that.
Absolutely.
But anyway, that's a suggestion, and I would volunteer to be part of that group if you get one.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate that.
But you're doing a great job, all of you. You're addressing the right problems. I think I've covered just about everything. Oh, the city hall, the new city hall. What's the status of that? I know they took the jail down, but they haven't begun any construction. Is there a timing on that?
We are hoping for groundbreaking, uh, next month and May, with that, the new city hall across the way here. We're hook, looking at about twelve-month, probably twelve-to-thirteen-month build time, construction time? Yes, sir.
But the start time is about...
The next, uh, early, I hope by, say, May, May fifteenth or so, we'll have groundbreaking and, uh, contractor be on-site, starting that work for, like, the site and all.
And I see that they've started the sports complex project down on Tennessee.
Yes.
That's gonna be a big thing down there, isn't it? A lot bigger than most people realize.
Yep.
Uh, let's see, is anything I missed here? I'm trying to just get them all done at one time here. Oh, parking garage. Originally, when this was announced in, in our paper, which our paper is not much to brag about anymore, but a couple of years ago, it introduced this idea of two parking garages. And one has, has now been built, but I haven't heard anything more about the second one.
The county is building, um, if you were to...
Land or rent?
Yeah, if you were to leave here and go up the, well, actually between Cherokee, between Church, on Church Street, you know, with the old building where they took down over there?
Yeah.
There's going to be a three-hundred-space parking deck?
I, I don't know.
I, I think the number is roughly, it's a county, it's a Splosts project we're all paying for, but the county is running that project. It'll have, uh, three-hundred spaces, there'll be a walking bridge over to the new administration building that they're also building on...
Is that a two or three-story?
I can't speak to that. The commissioner could give you the particulars, or if you know Randy and want to share...
We did receive the plan.
Okay.
So, so once you get that, uh, agreed, agreement, how long would that take to get started? Because that's another problem, is parking downtown is a serious problem, too.
Yeah, that is a, uh, Bartra County project, not a city of Cartersville. You'd have to ask, uh, the commissioner or the county manager, Peter Olson, that information. They have not provided that to the city.
But the two big, there's two or three problems. One is traffic, one is police enforcement, and the other is, uh, parking. I mean, there's, they're all kind of go together, but...
Yep.
There are major things that we should be addressing now before it gets any worse. Just my suggestion.
Thank you.
And I'd be glad to help if you need anything.
I appreciate that. Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
First of all...
Hey, Mike.
Hey.
If you'll hand one to the, if you'll hand one to Julia, uh, yeah.
Thanks, sir.
How much, how you doing?
Good.
You keeping everybody straight today?
You want to give me one, or you don't want me to look at it?
You want one?
I mean, if you're giving it to everybody else, I'll take one, sure. Okay. Thanks.
All right, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Mike Taylor, forty-five Hickory Hill Drive, Cartersville, Georgia. Uh, good evening to you guys. Um, I am here representing the city of retirees. I have a couple up here with me tonight, and I want to read a prepared statement that we have for you. Uh, we, the retirees of the city of Cartersville are requesting a much-needed cost of living raise. The city council approved the last one in two thousand and one, and our hope is that you'll approve our request now. Twenty-four years was a long time ago. The factors influenced this request now are, are the extreme rise in cost of living due to inflation and the aftermath of the global pandemic. When we retired, we began to live on a fixed income and have no financial assistance to aid in, uh, for, for mentioned factors which are out of our control. Many retirees are suffering financially, and after devoting our lives to dedicated service to the city of Cartersville, we feel this request should be approved. In addition to the request, we would also like to ask consideration that the yearly rise in insurance premiums every year not be put upon us. As retirees, we don't receive the yearly raises offset, uh, the rise, to offset the rise in insurance. Our retirement pay should not go down every year. Perhaps the rise in premiums for retirees could be absorbed by the city of Cartersville. We gave our all, we served with pride, and so we ask you to please consider this request. Your votes are the only way to achieve either or both of these requests. I want to thank you all for serving, thank you in advance for your consideration of our request. Attached is a list of the signatures of some of the retirees that represent them. Given time, we can get more signatures if necessary. Also attached is a copy of the amendment for the retirees' last cost of living raise. And, uh, so, you know, we got, we got some people out there struggling pretty good, and, uh, you know, we didn't have control over a lot of things, and we just asking y'all to consider this. If, you know, if you did that, we would appreciate it, and all we can do is ask. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike.
All right.
Any questions? Thank you. Anyone else needs to come for counsel this evening? All right. Well, if there's no other business to conduct, chair will entertain a motion to adjourn. Happy Easter.